The agenda with the approval. Councilman McGowan made the motion, Councilman Dobbin seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, but we are canceling that public hearing because the people that wanted it have changed their application. They withdrew the application that would require this public hearing, so that is no longer necessary. And when we approve the agenda, we approve the cancellation. At this time, we will have our first open forum. Anyone wishing to address council, please come forward, state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. No one wishing to come forward. I counsel the open forum at six thirty-two. Next, we go into our regular business. I would like to say that I have been to several meetings since our last meeting. I attended the Economic Development Gala at the airport with Wendy and Leanna. We had a very good evening of meeting greeting, talking with people in the county. I attended the mayor's meeting in Selma. We had a very good meeting there, getting things further along on the rezilization of some sewer. I attended the lighting of the Christmas tree, wonderful event we had at town hall. And then we had the second day at the park, enjoyed immensely. I also attended the Christmas breakfast that they have in Kinley every year, and that was a very good event this year. Two more things that I would like to bring to the attention of council. There has been some talk of a burning ban in town. Wendy and I are working with the attorney to try to get an ordinance together that would be acceptable. We have worked two or three times trying to get it worded. We're hoping to be able to bring something to council in January. I wanted to let y'all know that we have not forgotten it, and it's not just put on the back burner. We are working to get it worded so that it can be accepted. You have to cover a lot of bases because we want it to be correct. We don't want the everyday person to be penalized, and we've got to make sure we have it worded correctly. The other thing that Wendy and I are working on is to look at moratorium, I couldn't think of what it was, Wendy. You had asked about a moratorium. Wendy and I are trying to work on an ordinance to establish a moratorium on residential growth. Now, we have to be very careful with that, too, because we don't want the average person that wants to build a house on their lot not to be able to do that. So Wendy and I are working on trying to get an ordinance for that. Now, these are ordinances, so they will have to go to the planning board. That's why I'm working with Wendy and the planning department. The planning department is doing research, and Wendy and I are trying to put it together so that we can bring it to y'all. But it will have to go to the planning board for their approval and then to town council. So I wanted to let y'all know that we had not forgotten these two items. They are on our agenda, and we're working on them. And we're pulling our attorney in every chance we can get to make sure we are wording everything like it's supposed to be. So I wanted to let y'all know that. I think that's all I have, Leanna.
Just a couple of updates on some things that have been going on. We've got a lot of projects, so I just wanted to update you. The dog park location and starting that process, we are meeting at the park on January third, when we come back after the new year, to look at the location up at the front of the park. On January the eighth, we will have the bid opening. That's the date set for the bid opening for the council chambers, construction work. We've got, the bids are out, and we had the pre-construction meeting or the pre-bid meeting, and the bids are due back on January eighth. We, the panel for the police department design work, excuse me, finished reviewing the submissions from the engineers on that design work. And on January the ninth, we will be meeting with the top candidate to do some contract negotiations, and we hope to have that contract to council on January twenty-first for you to review and approve. The RFQ for the salary study for this year will be going out the first of January, and we hope to have that to council at your work session on January twenty-seventh. Not the study, but the contract for the study. And then on February sixteenth, we have scheduled our branding event. That is to reveal the new branding and logo. And the name of that is Smore Town Spirits, excuse me, Smore Town Spirits. So it'll be a smore-themed afternoon at the park, because it will be in February. So we'll be rolling that out with presentation by Small Town Soul. We'll have events for the kids for smores, with a flag for sale, goodie bags with our new logo on it and stuff. So we'd like to see a good turnout for that. We do still have the ornaments for sale that we purchased to sell at the Tinsel Tree Lane event and the tree lighting, and we did sell some of them at those events, but we still do have some at town hall. So if you haven't bought yours yet, you can go by town hall. They're twelve dollars each. And that's all I have unless anybody's got any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Leanna? Okay. Sherri's not here.
She's not, but if anybody has any questions, I will do know that.
You've got Sherri's financial report in front of you. Does anyone have any questions that you see? I don't see anything that stood out to me. She did tell us that the ad blorum tax is not exactly what she had hoped for in November, but it should increase in December, so. The next item on the agenda is the planning and zoning. We need to call for a public hearing on a special use permit for three thirty Twin Creek Drive. The planning board has approved this and sent it to us. We need to call for a public hearing on our January twenty-first meeting.
Make a motion that we call for a public hearing on the S U P O one two oh two four for three thirty Twin Creek Drive. Excuse me. Twenty twenty-five, I'm sorry. On January the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion made by Councilman Trippit, seconded by Councilman McGowan. Are there any questions? All in favor? All opposed? Does anyone have any questions for Wendy on the planning report?
And they have to, they had to schedule the people to go out to flush the stormwater system before they could clean that out, and they've been, they had to get on their schedule. They were, they're hoping to finish it all this month, from what he told me. I talked with him last week. I explained to him the urgency, and he promised me it will be done this week or this month.
Wendy, where is Mill Creek?
Mill Creek? Right across from B and J Farms.
Why have they got a bunch left? What are they still waiting on?
They have to get their landscaping up to town standards before we'll take everything over.
That's where I thought it was. I thought that was what we were talking about here. Okay. Does anyone have another question for Wendy? Thank you, the report's very thorough. In the, the event committee?
Have any questions, I'm here.
Have you met Willie Robertson?
I have. I was there whenever he came in to drop off his application. He seems like he's very.
On this application, he checked, planning board?
He did, and I am sorry, I forgot to mark that out or put a memo in there. He was thinking that was event planning rather than planning board. But I spoke with him about that, and he said, I just want to be wherever you can put me, so.
Events?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
So not on planning board?
Right, yes.
Okay, that's.
And he asked if he needed to fill out a new application, and I said, no, I'll explain on his behalf, so.
So Wendy, what is the, I see we have something on Tinsel Tree Lane on December sixth.
Yes, since the reports are a month behind, you'll get your December report, like actual report, next month. But I can give you some updated numbers on that. We had six vendors, we had a few drop out, and a couple food trucks had to drop out as well.
Okay, I guess my confusion is simply the, like last year, you had the Santa Claus and everything at town hall and the whole campus. Which one is that? Is that the sixth or the seventh?
We had that on both days.
It's gonna be on both days?
Yes, that was both days. We had, we moved all the activities inside on the sixth due to the cold.
Okay, and on the seventh, it's at Community Park?
Yes, it was.
Oh, gee, it is past the seventh.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm not even thinking right. I take it all back.
It was a very good event, both days. I was there. From start to finish.
And when is, when is the, are we going to have the town hall event?
That was what was on the sixth.
That was it, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
And the winner will be announced this Friday.
Well, we know who that's gonna be. Thank you, thank you. We, we need to, yeah, we've got to vote on this application, gentlemen. It, he does not have to be in the city limits. I don't, I don't know.
It is not.
It is not, okay. Motion made by Councilman Jernigan, seconded by Councilman Trippet. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, chief. It's your turn. Okay, Patrick. Okay, so we're gonna skip the police and go to Patrick. Anybody have any questions for Patrick?
I don't have a question, oh, I don't have a question, but I do want to point out that Patrick and I are getting together on Wednesday to do the second round of food for the children here at Wilson's Mills Elementary. So thank you, Patrick, thank you for, Leanna, letting him go and giving us the credit card and the car. It's gonna be fun.
Well, I know the school appreciates it, because I've talked to both the principal and Ms. Young, so I know that they appreciate it. Yeah, if you're, are you ready or? Okay. We can go through your report while you're waiting for them.
Yeah, chief, I'm just amazed. I mean, it's a, it's a good report. I appreciate it, and the stops and the activities, and thank you, sergeant, for bringing it all to a head. I, I just want to express my, my, not disbelief, but my surprise, and I really shouldn't, that in your DWI checkpoint, you had sixteen no operator, four revoked, three expired license, so that's what, was that twenty-three, two with no insurance, that's twenty-five. Twenty-five vehicles out of all of those you stopped should not have been on that road in any way, shape, or form, and it disappoints me. There's so many people out there just hop in a car and go, no tags, no license, no insurance, no license, nothing. It's amazing.
And you and I have to pay for them.
Yeah, and we do have to pay for it, you're correct. That's a lot of vehicles. So out of curiosity, and just to give you more time to get your guy in here, with what was I gonna say here, with the, with the no insurance, do I get towed?
Sometimes it does.
Shouldn't they all be towed? I'm curious about that. If you've got no insurance, it shouldn't be on the road.
Oftentimes, that's up to the discretion of the officer.
Really? I wouldn't want to let, I'm just saying, I got no insurance, he gonna drive down the road?
I mean, the tags are usually taken.
I can't, I can hardly hear you, chief. Could you bring the chief up?
The tags are usually taken.
The tags are usually what?
Taken.
Taken? Oh, another reason why it shouldn't be on the road, okay. And I can't drag this out anymore, but I'm just, I'm just disappointed in, I guess, in people in general. Nothing we can do about it, is there?
Well, we can do more checkpoints and more of those type of activities.
Was this done on, on seventy? At what time? Really? Okay, well, you did a good job, and it's tough out there on a, on an interstate, to be an interstate like that, stopping those kind of cars at that hour of the night. I mean, you're taking your lives in your own hands, and I fully understand that, and I stand up with you on that. But holy cow, twenty-some-odd people out there should not have been on that road. Make them walk home. Thank you, guys, for what you do, though.
Chief, are we, are we at full capacity staffing?
Yes and no. That doesn't make any sense, but we have no openings right now. Everything is, all our positions are filled, so we're kind of in blast here.
What he's saying is he wants more officers. He's not where he wants to be, I know that.
Right. I need more officers, I wanted more officers, but we are full right now with no openings.
How about vehicles, chief? Are they all out there that we have, they all wrapped and on the road, they equipped?
We have two, well, we have one waiting to be with two waiting to have communications put in on radio and everything. It's been a bill backlog and delay on that, not sure what's going on there, but just across the board, it's just been very hard.
There's always delays, isn't there?
Yeah.
Buying them and now getting them wrapped and equipped.
But as far as the other vehicles, they're, they're operational. They're starting to get some miles on them. You know, we haven't been able to rotate them out as quickly as we'd like, but they're all operational, they're all on the road.
Do we have any that are coming up for out the door?
Yeah, we have about three.
Three? Are they all gonna hit it once?
Well, they should have already been headed towards out the door, but, you know, just the way it is. We need vehicles.
Do we have any in the pipeline right now that we've already ordered?
We have two.
Okay, like we did last time? Okay, good. All right, and we're looking to get them when?
Well, they haven't given us a date yet, but we've already put the order in. Nowadays, you gotta put the order in at least a year ahead of time.
Right, right. And I was glad to see that we have a new maintenance technician or a technician down there now who's able to do some of that stuff in addition to his mowing and replacing lights, and saw Tony elbow-deep in a vehicle today.
That's, that's working very well.
Yeah, I was gonna, is that saving us, is that saving us any money that we can look at right now? I'm getting nods.
I think so, especially with oil changes, for half the cost of what we would normally get them done, and tires also.
Are we still having to go out, though, to, you know, Advance and all these other places to get parts when you need them? Or are we able to stockpile any of them yet for a quicker turnaround?
He's able to do both, stockpiling tires, stockpiling filters, I guess. As much as you can, oil, definitely stockpiling oil.
Okay, well, the, we spoke at one point in time about the tire machine. Is that up and running for mounting and balancing? Okay, I just remember at one point, we had, we didn't have it up, and I haven't asked since then, but that's good. I can't delay anymore.
This is unusual.
This is unusual. Unless I ask every officer to stand up and give me his bio.
I just would like to say that I am very proud of our police department and the fact that when you see them, they are very professional, and no matter where I see them, I get that same, no matter where it is, if it's on the grounds, if it's at the park, if it's at JD's, I, I receive professional from my officers, and I am so proud of y'all, just so proud. When somebody says, how many officers you have in Wilson's Mill, most time I tell them, we have all we need.
Chief, did I see in your report, are you finished? I'm sorry, I don't mean to jump in there. Did I see somewhere in here, we had a small chase? I'm getting a nod back there from somebody with a badge, so did we, did we have a vehicle pursuit?
Yeah, we have one of those every week just now.
Yeah, what, can we, can we review, if you will, briefly, our pursuit policy? Because I see an awful lot of that with a lot of municipalities and counties, and I wanna, I wanna know where we stand on our pursuit policy. Till the wheels fall, I hope not, but go ahead.
Well, it's officers' discretion, but we want them to be safe and, you know, use their head by what they're doing. Most of the time, the infraction starts, you know, in town. The officer can, you know, proceed and chase. Well, gets to certain high speeds or depending what time of day, traffic, you know, what's going on in the roads, you know, they'll break it off. We don't want them to go but so far outside of Wilson's Mills, ETJ, you know, if it's, again, it depends on what it is and how fast they're going and what they're chasing them for. You're not gonna chase them necessarily for a stop sign violation, but oftentimes, the chases result from a traffic stop. I think one of the recent ones, it was a traffic stop, and the guy sped off after the traffic stopped, it had already been initiated. You know, so we're gonna chase them. But it's reasonable. What I want them to do is, is be diligent and be smart about how fast they go, where they go, and when they decide to break it off.
Are the pursuits all monitored by either you or your sergeants?
Yes. We go back and review the, not only the video, but.
Well, I'm talking active, actively listening to the pursuit and making a decision as to cut it off or not.
Yeah, if someone is, especially if someone is there at that time, you know, and usually the officer will break it off themselves, they realize, you know, the danger, or if you're heading into town, or you're way outside of town, I mean, and oftentimes, they can radio ahead and have, you know, other agencies get involved. And if that's the case, we can break it off and let them continue to pursue.
Yeah, let them do the pit maneuvers.
Right, and there's been instances where they've stopped them way outside of Wilson's Mills, and then we go there and affect their arrest anyway.
Good, good, all right, they're using.
Mostly, it's just good judgment.
And that's what, that's what we pay them for, that's what we hire them, they have good judgment. They don't do stupid stuff.
Try to drill in at speed kills.
Right.
And it has killed here in Johnston County, unfortunately.
Thanks, chief, I can't go anymore.
You ready to proceed?
I'm ready. I think this is the fourth, maybe fifth, might have lost count. What we call a top cop award is Officer of the Year, and we present it to what we feel management, we figure out who we think is the best deserving, who's been the most diligent, the most energetic, most, you know, just the best officer of this particular period. Now, I'm proud of all the guys, because they all give, give their all, and we got a good group, core group of guys. This particular officer, he, it is a he, last year was a female. He came to us about, I think it was May of this year. He had been working part-time with us for quite a while, but he came in in May and just took over our traffic enforcement program. He's been here since May, and this does not count December stats, but alone, he's had one thousand seventy-two traffic stops just by himself alone and affected about nineteen arrests out of that. He had some accolades from a traffic accident he had in June. Citizens, couple heading to Morehead City, were involved in an accident, and they sent me a letter, basically just talking about how professional and how, how much compassion this particular officer had, you know, in their accident. We don't get that a whole lot, so it was really impressive. He currently serves on the Secretary of State Task Force, which is tasked with counterfeit items and enforcing registered products here in the United States in North Carolina. He's a member of our Johnston County Gang Task Force. He's our de facto drug agent. We don't really have a lot of drugs here in Johnston County, I mean, here in Wilson's Mills, but if we have something, he's the person we go to. He likes to get into a little bit of everything, you know, sometimes that's a challenge, but that's a good thing. When he first came here, you know, we talk a whole lot. He's a sponge, he likes to just suck up information, ask a lot of questions. That's a good thing for officers. So this year's recipient of the Top Cop twenty twenty-four Officer of the Year Award is Tavon Davis. Presenting it is his wife.
I don't know what to say about it, no. Appreciate, chief. Oh, absolutely, sorry about that. There's so much to say about this. I appreciate the opportunity that chiefs provided me coming here, and the council just provided me a place to finally come. I've been here, what, since twenty nineteen, part-time, you know, without my wife. She supports me, she gives me that drive to give me, to give one hundred and ten percent. My wife and how I work is a direct reflection of our family, and how I carry myself, and I just appreciate everything, everything everybody's done for me, and I'm gonna just keep on pushing and giving one hundred and ten percent. I appreciate, chief, I appreciate everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Thank you, chief. Now, we'll have the second open forum. Anybody wishing to address council, please come forward, state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. No one wishing to come forward, we will close the open forum at seven o'clock. Now, it's time for council remarks, and I would like to take a minute. I would like to say thank you again to all our officers who are present, who took the time to come, to be here, to recognize our top cop. I thank you for the times that I have met you and you took the time to speak to me. I told the chief one time that I wanted to meet all the officers because I didn't know them. And you know what it's called, it was? Don't worry, they know who you are. So that was reassuring to me, but every one of you have, when I have met you, you have taken the time to speak and to acknowledge and to tell me things that were going on, and I appreciate that so much. Thank you for all you do. Keep doing what you're doing, because it's working for us, you're keeping us safe.
My turn. My turn.
Your turn.
Everybody's looking. Well, um, I initially had a lot of comments. Cause I did a lot of research. Well, I've condensed it down and others have condensed it down for me, first off, the burning side. I had two, two things I wanted to talk about tonight, and that is the, the, um, developers, in my opinion, this is strictly me speaking, complete and utter disregard for the, uh, the, the safety and health of the, of the citizens of Wilson's Mills and their just rampant open burning when they, uh, when they clear property. It's, uh, it, it's very, I'll, I'll wait for a second till everyone. It's very disconcerting to me and, and to a lot of other folks and, uh, and they absolutely have no, no qualms about being somewhat less than honest in, in, in their comments, uh, to me and I believe to others. So with respect to the burning, I'm gonna go ahead and throw that whole thing out now because, um, it has taken its path and there are others that are now looking into this and that's, uh, that's, I think that's a good point. I've given each of the appropriate staff members and all of the council, uh, uh, copies of, of my research and I still want you to look over it because when we decide, when we come out to the point where we have to make a decision on open burning, um, and it is our decision to make, I, I want you to have the, the benefit of council's research, which is in here, it's, it's very in-depth and it's very concise and right to the point and it's very important, so please, please, please look that, that over. Um, and I, I, I see where it has been put back in our, in our court, if you will, by the, um, by the planning board, yeah, yeah, on their September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, um, comments here. And the planning board is, is, uh, is, is suggesting that, uh, burning boxes be added, so we're, we're looking at all of that stuff now and that's good, so I don't have to go into that anymore. The second thing, and this is very important to me, uh, and that is I attended the latest planning board meeting, which was, um, the end of November. Uh, as, and I was looking forward to it the previous month, but as they had two other times this year, um, a, a lack of a quorum, and that's three times, and I think they have taken the steps this past meeting, and I'll tell you what that was. They have taken the steps to, to address that, previously it was, um, three consecutive, three consecutive mean, uh, meetings missed and you were eligible to be dropped. And, uh, I asked the planning board to relook at that and, and change that to something a little bit more realistic and they did. And it's been approved by the planning board and that is three total meetings missed in the calendar year and you will be dropped from the, uh, the planning board. I think that's very, very important, cause we've had so many, there are too many people in there attending one meeting and then being offered to, attending another one, being offered to, and they're playing the system, and I don't like to be played in any way, shape or form. Uh, the second thing was I had asked the, uh, through, through paperwork that I had submitted, I had asked, and you have a copy of it, that the planning board look at and, and give this council, even though it was just me doing it, advice on perhaps changing our single-family, um, ordinance, residence, or, um, I'm sorry, units per acre and the, 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 what do you want to call it, Wendy, you know what I'm talking about? I'm sorry, the density, yeah, to something more, a little bit more realistic, and I've given you a copy of, of what I did on that. And then I gave you, uh, included on that page is, um, the current and then what my suggestions were. I don't want to have to ask builders or tell builders what they can build, what color it has to be, how tall, how wide, or anything else. But I think what we can do to address the housing density and this i- i- is to look at the lot size and change the lot size, so builders then will have to, to, to adopt their housing, um, in a similar fashion. I was not aware that Mayor, you and Wendy were working on this. Um, had, had I known this at the last meeting, it might've turned out a little bit differently, and as it was, the planning board, without having an open forum, uh, I didn't say anything until I was asked a question and I responded to that. And, um, and here's what I was told, and this is what bothers me, Mayor, because the planning board and this town council have to work together. And I didn't see it at that meeting. I was told that the planning board is in the process of rewriting the Unified Development Ordinance, the UDO, and they'll get to this, and this is, this, I'm paraphrasing, they'll get to this sometime in April or maybe a little bit later. And then I was looked at directly and told that if you've ever written a book, you'll know that you don't start writing a book at, in the middle. You start in the beginning and work towards the end. In other words, we'd rather not look at this, this, uh, development change until we get to it, and it'll be sometime in April. I'm just a council member, but I don't know how you all feel about it, but this is something that I don't want to postpone until April, I think it's very important. And by the way, that person was absolutely wrong. You do start writing a book from the middle, I know that from experience. Chief, I don't know about you, but my book starts in the middle. And I also sat down with, with, with an author that I think everybody here would, would recognize, and he actually told me where he starts, he starts right in the middle, his name was Tom Clancy, and he was a business customer of mine. Yes, you do start in the middle, sir. So I think, I would like, I'm, I'm glad you guys are doing it, I wish somebody had told me, I wouldn't have had to spend hours sitting there and writing all of this stuff up. It's a surprise to me because as far as I knew coming into this meeting, the planning board was not going to look at it until sometime in April. And now I understand differently, so I guess you stole my thunder and that's okay, everybody can go home a little bit sooner.
Let me fill it a little bit further, they're hoping to bring it to council by April. So that you can vote on it.
Okay.
They are working on it, they've been working on it for six months.
Well, the impression was they're not going to get to it until April, not, they're working on it now, they're gonna bring it to us in April, Mayor.
Let me explain this to you. The UDO is a book about this thick.
Yes, ma'am, I'm aware of that.
So if you go in there and change the size of the lots, just like you've got it written here on this page, it may affect three or four different other parts of that UDO. So you can't just change one without seeing how it's gonna affect the other. And that's what the planning board is doing.
That's fine, let's, let's go ahead and do that.
They're going through it, section, unsection.
Well, that's, I understand that, Mayor, but let me, let me just tell you this, I, I have been lectured, as we all have, way too often by the planning board, they have stood up and lectured us. I never have liked that, I've never appreciated that, I always felt like I was back in school, as I feel like we are right now, but I'm just telling, telling you this, I don't think any other council members have attended their meeting and, and get put in their place like I was, and I was, I was not a happy camper and that's why I did all of this, so the bottom line is things are changing, let's move forward with it, let's get it done, okay? Let's have the planning board, I'd like to have a copy of their minutes, so at least I know what hap, what is happening with the planning board, alright? I, I don't have anything else to say, but that's it, thanks. I'm done.
Okay, uh, like I said, I have a couple of things to say. Number one, I know how hard the planning board works. Because I was on the planning board for five years before I decided to run for town council. These people are providing a great service to the town of Wilson Mills. To question their integrity is totally wrong. They are doing what they can do the way they have to do it, which is step by step by step. So to me, telling them that they not, they don't, uh, they don't have the, and I read, I read the statement, they don't have the goodness of, and I might, might, might not be quoting correctly. They're not interested in being good for the town of Clayton or town of Wilson Mills, is totally wrong. They have every single right to do it the way they planned to do it. They have been a great service to this town. I know good and well, cause like I said, I was on the, on the planning board for five years before I did, I, I got this job. And this job was because I had the belief that the planning board and the people of this, and the people of this city wanted us to do the right thing with the growth of Wilson Mills. So I just wanted to say that because I am totally, totally for the planning board to do it and do it the right way.
Anyone else?
I, I, and I just jotted these down and waited to, to our comment, um, street names, renaming, have we gotten any closer to, to doing that, Wendy? Okay. Um, and I guess, I guess for Lee Ann, since she is not here. Do, do we, do we think, huh? What did I say? Yeah, um, the, do we think that we're losing revenue to the county? Or to another town because of our zip code issues? Reason I ask that is because there was, there was recently a bill introduced in, in, into Congress ab- about that very issue, and, uh, I mean, not just that, but, but emergency response as well. Um, which, which when I was reading that, I thought, well, that, that, that could very well be us. I don't know that, and I don't know how you find that out.
Well, I do know that the towns who, who pushed to have that bill introduced are towns that do not have their own zip code because they don't even have a post office. They're incorporated, but they don't have a post office like we do, so we have our own zip code and then we also have additional zip codes where mail delivery comes. But every physical address within our town limits, where we get our taxes, whether it's sales tax, communication, franchise, anything like that. Every address that we have within the town limit, when it's assigned or changed or created, it's sent to those state agencies that calculate the taxes that we receive. So, I mean, I'm not gonna say it's a hundred percent, cause everybody's got human error, but unless there was a, an a particular address that didn't happen to get sent into the state agency. But every time an address is created, we have specific agencies that we send that to so that we can make sure that we get our tax money back.
Cause this, and the one I'm talking about is a, a federal bill, not a state bill. This, this is a federal.
House Bill twenty-three seventy-one or something like that today, we got a, we got an email about it today, the managers did, but like I said.
Washington, not, not Raleigh, though, I mean.
Okay, okay, well, there is one.
I'm talking about Washington.
Okay, there is one in the, in the state right now.
There's a federal one.
That was created by four towns who do not have a post office, so I thought that might've been what you were referring to.
No, this is a federal one, and, and when I was reading, I thought, well, that could very well be us, but I, I don't know. Um, I, I was gonna ask, um, Mayor or somebody, has DOT come out with any, any polls yet for stoplight? Or they still?
They will not let us put up a stoplight.
Why?
We don't, okay, we don't have polls, we can't do it that way, and we don't have enough traffic. Where were you putting it, at JD's?
At JD's.
And three traffic studies at that intersection.
So they say. They haven't showed a one of them to me, and I'll put that.
Well, I would like to recruit, uh, as, as a council member, I would like to request
The study?
Those traffic studies.
Lee.
Yeah.
Leanna, would that be from, uh, Johnston County or would it be from the state?
Yes, and, and you mentioned that before I went to the last Highway forty-two, or excuse me, Interstate forty-two commission meeting last month, and I spoke with our representative about it again, because they did one a year and a half ago. And we specifically requested when they did one a year and a half ago that they wait until school was in, because we talked to them about it during the summer, and we said, don't do it now, do it when school is in, so they waited until October of last year and did it and said that there was still not enough for a traffic light. And the second question was about a roundabout. And the problem with a roundabout in that area was the trucks coming from Bartlett, which now they have an exit to get on. So I don't know if maybe a roundabout might be an option now, and he said that that's something that they.
Are they gonna let us have a copy of it? I mean, what?
I'm pretty sure I got that about a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
I can, I can see if I can find it, but I'm sure I got a response letter from them, because I, I knew when they were done and they sent me the information that they specifically said it was not, there was not enough traffic there.
I just cannot believe that there's not enough traffic at that intersection.
If it was a four-way, I think there would be, but it's just the T-stop.
The whole reason that I ask is the other night I couldn't even get in the store to get a hot dog.
Yeah.
Because there was an accident there with about fifteen fire trucks, four, uh, uh, most of our force was there. I mean, they, you just couldn't, you couldn't get in there, and, and, and I'm sure.
There's certain, I, I agree, there's certain times of the day that if you try, I go down Main Street rather than to go to that intersection, cause you can't get out.
Well, still, I'm, I'm, I don't know what we have to do, but, but I don't, I, I don't know if councilor has to do it or what, but I, I would love to, for this council to, to receive those reports, those studies that they did, um.
Maybe we need to make a formal.
Just so we, just so we can be in request.
Well, and I just got one question going back to what Tim asked about. When are we gonna be required to change our address to Wilson Mills? He said that we would eventually be required to put Wilson Mills, but still use the same zip code.
I don't know when that'll be, you can use it, you can start using it anytime you want to.
But when will we be required to have it changed with all our stuff? Because that's a while.
I don't know a date, but I mean, that's, that's a project that.
But can you do it now?
Yeah, you can go ahead and do it now, you sure can.
Okay, I just, because, I've been thinking about.
The only thing that may not work right now is packages from bigger carrier companies like FedEx or UPS. Some Amazon, Amazon usually goes by the postal service addresses, so you could probably use it for them, but FedEx and UPS, you probably wouldn't be able to get a package that way now. But you can definitely get your mail that way.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Um, and, and just, I'm just throwing this, this out there, it just seems to me, it seems to me that DOT will shut down a lane of a four-lane highway out there. I think, I think there's sometimes somebody just sitting around and say, you know what, you ain't got nothing to do, go shut down a lane of seventy. The other day they had it shut down all the way from, from, uh, Swift Creek Road as far as you could see and not nary a person out there working.
I've seen that.
We have had accidents and people killed because of that. And somebody, I, I don't know if it's the engineer, I, I don't, I don't know, but it just seems like every other day that, there was a dump truck loading, loading dirt and they had the, you couldn't even get on seventy going eastbound. It said use westbound, well, if you go westbound, you gotta go all the way to Clayton to turn around, makes no sense. And I just, I just put up fence for a living, but I, I, I'm just, I'm just saying, it just seems like they wanna shut down something.
Well, I, I agree.
Just, just for no reason.
And I, March can't get here quick enough, they're supposed to be completely finished by March.
So, so that was on my next question, and so, so it's supposed to be becoming I forty-two around March, probably more like June. But, but somewhere in that, 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 that.
The spring of the year, let's say, by the end of March twenty twenty-five, yeah.
Okay, so my question is, and it was brought up one time before, and I still haven't seen it. But we need to, uh, to talk to DOT about some signage for our town of Wilson's Mills off of I forty-two. Don't nobody know that Swift Creek Road's in, in Wilson's Mills? There's nothing that says Wilson's Mills exit. There's nothing.
That's true.
I mean, you know, if, if, if we got council and, and we got staff that's working, we, I mean, and, and we got development going on, we need to, we need to have it directed where people know, here's where you get off of Wilson's Mills. You know, you got two interchanges now, so it needs to be at both of them.
And you're talking about Interstate forty?
Yeah, I mean, when it turns into Interstate forty, yeah. Yeah, I mean, when it turns into Interstate forty, yeah.
Forty-two?
Forty-two.
I forty-two.
Yeah, same thing.
N C forty-two, I forty-two, I forty, four forty.
But, but I, I just, I mean, I've not seen anything, and, and, and I think that, I think that we're, Wilson's Mills signage is just as important to direct people in as any other town, big or small. So if we could, if we could get them to, well, they may not have no signs, I don't know. They'll have poles, might not have no signs. I mean, I don't know.
They can't, they can't put poles up, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
They have to close a lane, though, to put the sign up.
Signs will close both lanes.
Tim, I kind of, I totally agree with you on one sense. Because, you know, I tell people that I live in Wilson Mills, and everybody says, where is that? And as you come down what's going to be called Interstate forty-two, there should be a sign that says Wilson Mills exit at both, for both spots. And because people, to be honest with you, they don't know where Wilson Mills is, and I, you know, I see people all the time, and I totally agree that, that we need to ask them, what, what kind of signs are they going to put on Interstate forty-two to designate exits to Wilson Mills? I mean, totally.
Yeah.
Um, when, back years ago, when, when people knew where Wilson's Mills was, because you had to come through here to get to the beach. Everybody and their brother knew right where Wilson's Mills were, and, and some of the old timers and out of the county still know that I run across. But I, I, I think that's important.
We can talk to DOT and find out what kind of signage they're planning on putting. Put that on your list, Leanna. Okay. Anyone else have anything to say?
Just got a couple of things. I read Mr. McGowan's stuff about what he proposed and all this stuff and about where the bans were and what the bans were. I grew up in Boone, North Carolina, so I know, know the Boone area. But what I did not see in any of these was what does the towns provide in replace of them burning? Do they provide pickup for trash or for leaves? Do they provide pickup for all the other stuff that we're going to ban from burning? If we do, how much is it going to cost us to provide this service? I mean, because if we ban burning, which I know that some places banning, but I'm promising they have something in place that those people will be able to get leaves and stuff and Christmas trees and stuff like that, because I see it happening all the time in the town of Clayton, because I go through Clayton all the time. You'll see leaves that, that the town will pick up, you see trees, Christmas trees that the town will pick up, but I see nothing in here that says, what are we going to do if we ban burning?
Well, I, I, I think, I, I didn't get that impression from reading. And matter of fact, I, I told Dave before, before the meeting that, that I didn't know that I'd be in, agree with a complete burning ban. But, but what, what I understood from reading this is the developers. I'll give you an example. Crescent Mills was being, was being cleared. They were burning that out there. I got complaints from, from town folks and about ash falling on the vehicles. It, it covered, it covered my vehicles as well. And, and I mean, that, and if you, if you don't let them burn, they can, they have to grind it up and haul it away. But as far as burning, like if you want to get out there and burn your Christmas tree and see how fast it'll burn, as long as you're safe about it, I mean, I, I don't, I, I, from what I got, and Dave might have a little more on it, but I, I was thinking contractors, clearing big subdivisions and stuff.
And that's what I was saying a while ago. It has to be the way you word that ordinance. You have to make sure you cover everybody in the ordinance. You can't just put out a ban burning because if you do it, you, you stop all burning.
Yeah, don't, don't, don't label me as saying banning burning. I didn't say anything about banning burning. Uh, what I did give you was a research article that was done by, was that Colleen Pridgen? Is that correct, counselor? And that's, that's your office, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
I do want to address that just briefly since it was included in the materials. Just a quick caveat and explanation, this memorandum was prepared by one of our associate's attorneys at my direction and sent to me. I did, I thought maybe, a lot of you thought it was from me, but it was delivered with the explanation that this was a memorandum prepared at my request that does research other localities. Some of the conclusions in the memorandum I don't completely agree with, but it, I just, it does present sort of the lay of the land and, and a lot of the legal issues surrounding burning, but I did just want to point out that that was not all authored by, by me, and I, I might just disagree with some minor portions of it.
Right, no, I, I fully understand that. And, and each member of council and staff that I gave it to, I said, this is not something I wanted to address and go into in-depth this evening. I'm asking that you take your time and look it over, over this next month, and perhaps at our next meeting, we can discuss it a little further in-depth to find out what we have to do. It's all in the wording. I'm not, I never said, and I don't want anybody down here to think that I said, I ban all burning and I ban all development. I'm not that way. I'm not that way. However, I will point out that I have been told it's the way we've always done it. And that's not the answer. This is the twenty-first century. You can't say we've always done it this way and we're going to leave it this way. It's not the way to do it any longer, and that's why we're here. And maybe that's why I'm here, to stir up as much crap as I possibly can. Okay? I want people to start thinking about it and not just brushing it off and saying, we've always done it this way, we're going to continue to do it this way. We don't need to do it this way, and the planning board knows we're not going to do it this way. And I have, don't get me wrong, I want to come back, I'm allowed to come back and say, I have the, the world's utmost respect for the planning board, okay? I really do. I know that there are some members in there that could, wouldn't give you two cents for me, and it shows sometimes. I, I don't care, I'm a big boy, I've had a whole lot worse than that done, but to tell me it's been done this way and we're always going to do it this way bothers me terribly. And I'm not saying they don't work. I know they work. But my point was, and hopefully now that they have changed their, their regulations, my point was that how can you say you're working as hard as you possibly can when you're missing twenty-five percent of your meetings because half, some of the members don't show up? That's wrong. That is absolutely wrong. And the other seventy-five percent, when they meet, I'm sure they work hard, but they could do a lot more if they had full attendance. We got to get people off their butts and get them out to the meetings. That's what I'm trying to get at. I'm not saying they do not work, and I will not say that. I have, I'm not disparaging our, our planning board whatsoever, and I'm not disparaging anybody here for their feelings that way, but I know what I've been told. We've always done it this way. No, that's wrong, sorry.
I want to say one more comment about the planning board. I was the first planning director of this town, first code enforcement officer. I helped write the first ordinances. I served on the planning board for about twelve years. Chairman for about ten of those twelve. And I will tell you this, I used to have to beg and write and call and plead for the members to come. It's not easy to get the members to come. I don't care what you do. You can tell them they're not going to serve anymore and they don't care. I, it's not right, I agree, but if they don't want to get off, the only way you can do is say, okay, you, you can't come, you can't be a member if you don't come. But it don't work sometimes.
Well, I leave that up to the president of the planning board. Donald can do that. Let's get some of those people off of there. Doris is always there. Jim Muzzell's always there. There are some people you can count on, but some of the others you can't count on, and how can you get your, the, the amount of work that needs to be done? How can you get it done when half of them are sitting at home?
It's hard to do.
It is hard. So, so JC, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying they don't work, and I respect them. All right, I, I see you guys over there. I'll, I'll be quiet. Go ahead.
Well, I, I just want to say that the five years I was on that planning board, and I take great pride in that I missed zero meetings in five years. But we had a lot of people that didn't come, but that didn't keep me from going to do what I, I wanted to do. And you're going to always have that situation that some people's not going to come. They'll, they, they, they volunteering, but then they, they find other things to do. But you can't talk bad about the whole board because some don't show. Those people that come are working their tail off to make it happen.
I think you misunderstood me, JC. I'm badmouthing the people that don't show up, not the board, as I've stated that, so please understand that. It's the people that don't show.
Anyone else have anything to say? Do I hear a motion?
I guess I'm limited for time now, Mayor? Is that what we've done?
Just keep going over the same.
Well, I know we do because people keep bringing stuff up, and I'm ready to, I'm ready to call it quits, but that's, that's fine. If you want me to shut up, I'll shut up. I've made my point, all right?
Do I hear a motion to adjourn? We've done, done the, yeah, we did the second open forum. No, after a meeting. Okay. Do I hear a motion, we adjourn? Motion made by Councilman Triplet, seconded by Councilman Jernigan. All in favor? All opposed? We adjourned.